Approval of the minutes of July 10th, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the second issue is the administrative minutes from August 14th. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second.
A second.
Feel like I'm drawing these things out. All in favor?
Aye.
The move. So we also need to mention tonight that one case, 19 Loomis Avenue, has been withdrawn. And so if anybody's here for that case, it will not be heard tonight.
It was continued anyway, wasn't it?
Nobody's rushing to the doors, no.
Yeah.
So, we open here with a public hearing and there's some zoning text amendments. And maybe we have a little staff report on those?
Sure, so there's two public hearings, one for assisted living overlay district and one for section eight removal of soil. So I'll give you the report. I guess, I'll give you one and then the other, because there's two separate votes.
Yes.
The assisted living overlay district, in 2018, the town looked at modifying the zoning ordinance to require assisted living across the board outside of the overlay district to have affordable housing at 5%. Prior to that, there was no requirement for affordable housing component for assisted living projects. During that process, it came to light that, in the Parker School site was actually brought up as part of it, that they had a 10% requirement under the, if they were going to modify their site and be under the overlay for a rehab or reuse of that facility. And so, based on that comment, the, it was, it was requested by council to take a look at that amendment and look at what the overlay district was attempting to do and whether it was reasonable to consider a 5% requirement there. In looking at that, the council and staff suggested that, under the intent and purpose, it wasn't, it wasn't clear that, really, the primary intent and the only time this overlay has been used was for a former school and town property. And so, the suggested language included identifying the reuse of historically significant buildings or former municipal buildings and facilitating potential public-private partnerships. And with those additional clarifications, the recommendation was to, to modify the requirement to be 5%, which is consistent with the, the other zoning districts where assisted living is allowed. So with that, staff suggests that the language, although there is a typo with, appears to be a strike through where it's supposed to be just bold, that which we will modify if you move to, move this forward to the town council, to include language to encourage the adaptive reuse of historically significant buildings and/or former municipal buildings and to facilitate projects that involve public-private partnerships under section A of section 5.11 and under section F, to strike out a total of 10% of units must be set aside and add, any project developed under this section shall meet the affordable housing requirements pursuant to provisions of section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance.
So these are clearly recommendations to the zoning board.
These, this is our recommendation to you, the next step in the process for a zoning amendment will be for you to make a recommendation to either support it, modify it, for the town council.
To the zone.
Town council.
To the town council.
That's right.
Okay. So, board of any questions on this subject?
I do.
You do.
Am I the only one?
Which you always do. That's all right.
So I have a, I have a general question, maybe just for everybody to wonder about, is, I'm kind of wondering why the intent and purposes doesn't include what I, I guess I would have thought was the main purpose, which was to provide a healthcare venue for Watertown residents who were aged or infirm that would allow them to stay in Watertown. And that seemed like the primary goal of an assisted living overlay within the town, not to encourage the adaptive reuse or public-private partnerships. Those are, those are buzzwords and not meaningful in terms of the citizenry and what they might look towards an assisted living unit for. So, whether those are good to keep, I guess I won't comment, although I guess I just did. But I really think that the council should consider putting something more spiritual in about what is the spirit behind this, this zoning district. And I, I hope it's something like what I've just said and that it provides an opportunity that's affordable for our citizens to stay in town and be taken care of.
I would suggest that if you'd like to add another bullet to the top or below, then suggest the language now, and then the board can discuss it, and then that would be your recommendation.
I'm going to read it?
Just happened, just happened to have it.
If the, I mean, if the, you know, so the board heard what you just said and that they can discuss that, if that's.
So let me just cover one other thing and then we can back, back step to that one. The other thing is that, it seems like the changes that are being proposed are being driven with one project in mind. So it's reactive to a particular applicant, and I think zoning should be independent of particular applicants. The ARMA comes to mind because it was also generated by a particular applicant, but it had, it reflected a long-term need in the town to take another look at the industrial zone and begin to think about the change from the town's industrial past to something not so in the future. So it was forward-thinking beyond that one project, so I, I don't really fault the ARMA. I think this is an example of something that should be forward-thinking as well, and it shouldn't be driven by the Parker School, for instance, or any other particular project in town. So that's a comment. I would like to go back to the, to the language, though, and see whether my colleagues have any traction with that idea, or otherwise it can just stay as it's been phrased by the council.
So, I can, I can address the idea of this versus zoning district. Councilor Petrelli is also here and he could speak to that, but from the perspective of this assisted living overlay, it was specifically created for a project called Brigham House. It was actually created for a previous project for a reuse of a church, which didn't work and it failed. And then it got used for the Brigham House. And so it is actually the opposite of a district-wide anything goes. So since this overlay was created, we have created a use called assisted living, and it is allowed in almost every district, in particular, all the commercial districts, the commercial districts and some of the mixed-use districts in Watertown. So when this was created, it was only for a few, it was intended for a few sites and the, the board and the council at the time, that's why they created it. And it was specifically for the reuse of these existing structures to be used for something that was, was a benefit to the town, but they didn't identify the, those lofty goals. So from that perspective, this overlay was, is designed to be applied to a site on a, if it is a relevant site, to have an overlay for assisted living. And so it would be a conversation about whether it's appropriate. Right now, the Parker School is not zoned with this overlay in place, so that is a completely different conversation. But when we were looking at the original language, it was clearly intended for these historic structures in town or reuse of existing buildings or for these public-private partnerships, like the Brigham House, which is a public-private partnership as well as a, a former school and a historic site, that's owned by the town, the site is still owned by the town. So that's just, from, from the perspective of this versus the RMUD, which is a, a new district which replaced an old district, it, it's not an overlay for a specific site. And so that, that is, it is, it is a little different because it is kind of like.
That's helpful, but, so the Parker School, is the overlay district existing now as a physical boundary somewhere in town besides the Brigham House?
No, only the Brigham House.
Okay. So is, this doesn't change that. We're saying that, we're saying in this one that if your assisted living, if your use is assisted living, you're not within the district, then you're not constrained by a 10% requirement. So we're essentially giving, giving away the 5% that would have otherwise been so-called affordable.
The overlay district was designed for these specific sites, and at the time, there was a minimum of a 10% requirement. Subsequent to that, we added assisted living to a number of districts with no assisted living or no affordable housing requirement. Last year, the planning board and the town council approved an amendment to add, and they looked at different numbers and felt that 5% was a reasonable number for the general assisted living model to, and we haven't gotten a project since then, there were some proposed and they are no longer moving forward. But that was a reasonable model to, to support affordable assisted living as well. So, so they ended up with, you and the town council ended up with a 5% recommendation and approval in the zoning ordinance for all other assisted living projects except for this overlay, which currently is only being used in one location at the Brigham House. So it's for unique properties and there is, you know, a unique conversation around each of these. If there was to be another assisted living under this overlay, that's a unique situation because they're very unique properties.
So someone else wanted to do a development that involved assisted living as an allowed use. Would that require an overlay be established on that property?
The, if it's an allowed use, taking your, interpreting what you're saying as one that's within, say, the central business zone, that would be a special permit with site plan review process, like the one that's at 28 Summer Street, and it would be a board review and approval with no overlay modifications or change. Does, that's, that, the overlay only applies to a site that is amended, the zoning map is amended to have the overlay on, and it's for a site that does not allow assisted living today. It's, it's a, the Parker School, which is in the T-zone today, but has a use variance to allow an office building in a former school is one example, and they, they were the ones that brought it up because they had been contemplating this, this potential overlay. There's other sites like that you could choose, like that, you know, the church was an example that ended up becoming condos. There's, there's examples of that, you know, in town, but you, it's on a case-by-case basis, and then you would have to go through the same hearing process to amend the zoning map. It would come here and then it would go to the council to decide that a site would complies with and meets the requirements to have the overlay on it.
The overlay is only required when the use is not allowed.
Right.
So the plan is to do an overlay whenever someone appropriates or suggests a use which people find generally agreeable?
Right. That, that's an appropriate use for the location, it's in the neighborhood, that makes sense, etc.
So, so back to the language, I think it's, you know, it's, it's up to others, I just, when I, I hadn't really paid any attention to this issue frankly until this came up for this evening. And I read the, the intent and purposes, and I was just shocked that it had nothing to do with, you know, something more lofty that I thought the town might want to express about respect for its aging citizens. And that's, you know, I don't know if that's even appropriate, it just seemed like when you say intent and purpose, to establish or to encourage or to promote, those words show up frequently in there. Maybe there should be something that the town says publicly about its view of assisted living facilities for its own citizens, but that's just.
So have you a point, do you'd like, a sentence you'd like to add?
I have something I would add, yeah, shall I, shall I read it or?
Please, yes, yes.
Okay. So, what I wrote was, the overarching purpose of this overlay district, maybe that should be changed because we're not talking about districts anymore specifically, is to encourage and guide development of assisted living facilities so that aging and infirm town residents have an option to remain in Watertown in an appropriate care environment.
Oh, good.
So, one point I'd like to make is, with housing of any sort, we have to be very careful about the, the language and suggest, we can't exclude people from housing. So, it, it's, it's a struggle that.
Are you saying that this excludes people?
Well, it's suggesting that the only reason to do it would be for Watertown residents, so I.
No, I didn't, I don't know if that's a general sense of the room.
I just, I'm just, I don't know, I'm just.
It just gives Watertown residents an option, which they don't have now, most of them, so.
So, board members, have any thoughts about that? I think that's very helpful, actually. Jason?
Yeah, I mean, would it, would it be more palatable if it just said local residents? Is that, I mean, I, I see getting has some trepidation about the wording, and, but I think in, in theory, it's a good thing to add, so.
Yeah.
What do we need to tweak, how do we need to tweak it to make sure that it's a good compromise?
Yeah, I would agree, as long as we can make it so we're not breaking any rules or anything by suggesting it.
So any comments from our esteemed counselors or anyone else on the, it's always tricky when the counselors are here, there's always a comment if something happens. It's a consistency.
Benny Petrelli, District C Counselor. So we spent quite a bit of time on this, we had two meetings about it. And the, this came up in the context of adding inclusionary zoning to the existing, adding the inclusionary zoning to the assisted living districts that there currently are in town, which came up in the context of us changing the inclusionary zoning to 15% townwide. So, and what happened is, this got kind of, this was not considered, so when we voted on that amendment and discussed the amendment adding the, the 5% to the, it's both assisted living and, it's not just assisted living, it's assisted living and independent living. So there's, if you read the, that section of the ordinance, it covers both. It came up, that somebody raised the issue that, well, what about the overlay district? And said, well, you know, we never had posted, we'd never posted it for discussing an amendment to this section of the zoning ordinance, so we were not allowed by the town attorney to actually take this up. So this came after the fact, sort of closed the loophole. And then, our number one goal was to make this consistent with the underlying inclusionary zoning requirements that we took in for the rest of the town. This, if, we discussed quite a bit at the meeting, the reason, we're not leaving units on the table, this was done for one property that the town owns, and the town issued a request for proposal, so we could have done whatever we wanted. This, this actual inclusionary zoning number is completely irrelevant to what we did at the Brigham House, because that was, the town still owns the property. It's interesting to note that in 25 years, no private property owner has undertaken to use this assisted living overlay because the numbers really don't make sense. We, when we examined the numbers with the Watertown Housing Partnership of what the percentage of affordable housing should be in, for, for assisted living and independent living, we came up with a different set of numbers that made economic sense. So these numbers actually don't, this 10% actually does not make economic sense, and I think it's borne out by the fact that in 25 years, with all the building that's gone on in Watertown, nobody's actually availed themselves of this. So, that was the first thing. And then it came down to the second question, which we, which we changed the intent and purpose. And we wanted to be clear that this, even though the gentleman here for, that owns the Parker School are interested in using this, and their concern was that if it's written at 10%, it's economically unviable, we actually were concerned that, you know, with the historic preservation of structures in Watertown, that this is kind of a good use. You know, there's, there's sort of a benefit that we provide assisted living in some of these former school buildings or former churches, and we would want to encourage that. But they're all in, all those buildings are in non-conforming zones, they're in two-family zones. So we actually, so it's the town council's prerogative to apply the overlay district on any criteria that the town council chooses. So we, we purposely left it vague, but there are certain things, and sort of the Parker School former municipal property that was sold with a request for proposal and developed into an office building. You know, right now, it can either continue its existing use or the owner can tear it down and build, you know, 22-family houses, which I think the community would not be happy with, because there was a benefit to maintaining the, sort of the 1920s school with the big open space. So, so that's why we, we added that. It goes without saying, and I'd be a little concerned about the language, assisted living isn't just for elderly and infirm.
Right.
So, you know, we have to be very careful of the language we use when we refer to people, because certainly you could live in the independent living section of it without being elderly or infirm, or you could live in the assisted living, where you need assistance with activities of daily life. And I guess, you know, somebody that was born with a birth defect would may not appreciate being called elderly or infirm. So we have to be very careful for the language. It's also, we have to be very careful that this isn't just for Watertown residents, under the Fair Housing Act, anybody who qualifies can live, live there. So, so I would say it's implicit that we have this overlay for, for assisted living with, within specific zoning districts, and is this overlay because we do think it's a good idea. You know, we added that in, and we added the affordable housing component to it because we do think it's important that lower-income people who need this type of living facility, you know, should be able to have the same opportunity as other people. So I think it's, it's, you know, we spent a lot of time working on that, and Council of Health is on the committee with me, along with Council of Woodland, and I think we were happy with this language that we came up, the town council. We think it captures the spirit of what we want to do, and it, but it also implies that, you know, we want to do this because we think assisted living is, is a good thing to have in Watertown. And, so, I don't, I don't think it really changed, what you proposed really changes it, but I, I am concerned that the way you'd actually worded it may be alienating.
No, I mean, correct, I don't think the way it's worded suggests that someone from outside town would be prohibited from living there, but it doesn't explicitly say that, for sure. And the piece. And the piece that you just mentioned about elderly is clearly not, it's not limited to that. People who have other disabilities would qualify as well. Let me ask you a question.
Yeah, just, let me just add one thing. So, yeah, but we were really clear, we didn't want this applied willy-nilly all over town. We don't want the house next door to be torn down and been built with assisted living. But there are certain structures that bear preserving from a historical or just that, because they're iconic buildings in the community. And this is an opportunity for the town council, if somebody who buys it says, you know, I could tear this down or do something else, or I could do assisted living. We want to give them the choice of saying, assisted living as an economic, economically viable alternative to just turning into luxury condos. So that's, you know, it's like, you know, we will know it when we see it, but we don't, but we didn't want to make the whole town available to sort of what is essentially an institutional use, because there's some places that are clearly not appropriate. Outside the zoning districts, I think it's the high three and central business district, where it's allowed, you know, on the zoning table with a special permit.
So how does affordable units even play out in an assisted living setting? Are we talking about group adult foster care program, the state program that provides subsidies?
No, no, they would, well, that's what the Brigham House has, is, has part of the state program, because we required that as part of the request for proposal, which is, that's one way to do it. But for a private, for a private business that is not, you know, taking advantage of that state program, they would just have to provide, you know, a certain number of units at that certain threshold, and, you know, that's the cost of doing business. We spent a lot of time, we had two assisted living operators and three, a third person who was interested in building another assisted living facility in Watertown, come and give us their opinion about, you know, the pro forma, what would work, what wouldn't work. Realize, and it's not just the rent of the unit. If you think about assisted living, there's the rent component, we're actually occupying space, and there's the service component. The, the service component is much more expensive than, than the rent component, quite honestly. And, but we were really clear, the council was really clear, that it isn't going to work to say, well, we'll give you, you know, a $500 rent, and you still have to pay $3,000 a month for services, because, you know, you know, somebody who's living on $24,000 a year of social security can't afford that. So, so we were really clear that the, the assisted living, the affordable component has to include both the, the rent for the room as well as the services. It's a, it's a package deal. One operator said that wasn't fair, and he was walking away from the project, and other operators said, no, they can make, they can make those numbers work. So I, when I, when I hear one, one developer say they can't and one developer say they can, it's like, well, what am I supposed, I guess, you know, we're on the right track, so. If everybody likes it, means we are leaving money on the table. But the fact that one likes it and one doesn't like it probably means it's good. And it actually is almost exactly the same percentage as what Newton currently has for their affordable housing component of assisted.
Is Brigham House 10%?
Brigham House is 10%, but they're part of the state group adult foster care program.
So why wouldn't any overlay district carry the same requirement as the first one?
Because we own the property and we can do, as a municipal property, we can put whatever requirements we want. And we gave the operator of, of the Brigham House a very favorable deal. They don't own the property, we do it, they renovated it, and, and we made that a condition of, of doing it.
So you're saying the town cannot require 10% of other sites?
We could. We could require 25%. We could, you know, require 100%.
I guess that's my question.
But the thing is.
Why is it different? Why would it be different?
Because the, the numbers really don't work.
See, it was a municipal, it was a municipally-owned property, which is obviously a different scenario than a privately-owned property, which this can apply to as well, so.
But, but it can't, you know, but, but it's, well, I just, you know, in 25 years, nobody, everybody's looked at it, said, this isn't going to work. And, you know, so, so sometimes we implement zoning and it doesn't work. And it doesn't work because nobody uses that section of, of the, of the zoning code. For 25 years, nobody has actually been able to use it because the numbers actually don't work.
So you're saying it's a bad guideline, it's a bad rule, should be changed across town?
Yeah. So which is what we, yeah. That, and what this does, this change basically harmonizes the overlay district with the very detailed economic analysis that was done by the Watertown Housing Partnership for the assisted living zones in town, so.
Well, let me, let me ask you that. I looked at this and the first thing that struck me was not really what's on everybody's mind tonight, and I apologize for all the time we've had to put into this, but I read, I read it from the top to the bottom, and the top, where it has the grand statement, purpose and intent. And I said, this is a pretty lowly purpose and intent. Is this really the town of Watertown? Is this what we want to say about our attitude towards assisted living? So my reaction, the, the attempt to cobble some text together was reacting to that, really. I just felt like, as my town, I'd rather have it take a little higher road than worry about public-private partnerships when you have an aging population with, which needs options. And they're getting priced out of their homes, their neighborhoods.
So Benny, let me interrupt.
Yeah, I, I just think if you look at.
No, we're all going to be assisted living unless this conclusion comes to conclusion here at some point. Do you have a problem with the amendment that he suggested?
No, just, I, I just think that the language would be, it needs to be more inclusive. I would just say that that would, if you want to do that, and again, if you want to look at it, if you go back to the, the section 5.07. I don't have the zoning book in front of me, but Jason does. The, actually, the, the.
11.
5.07.
07, right?
07. No, the assisted living.
About 11.
The overlay or the?
No, no, the non-overlay part of it.
It's, so it's 5.07?
Whatever language we use there, you know, it should be, you know.
Well, it's, it's in the definitions, so we have a definition of what, I mean, just to speak to the idea of, the intent of this overlay, and what, what we're suggesting is, the intent of this overlay is to allow significant buildings in zones where they're currently, don't have very good viable options, to be used for assisted living. That, that's not, that was the intent of this overlay originally. It, it's not about assisted living, it's about, it is, but it is also about reusing these buildings in town that are in neighborhoods or in zones that don't allow anything but certain things. And so you have an overlay which allows you to do subsequent or additional things above the, or underlying zone. And that's, that was the intent, and that's why the language today is not about the lofty goals of what assisted living is, it's about, it really, and that's why the language that staff and council suggests is, it's about the, the real intent was about preserving the significant structures and reusing them in meaningful ways. In adaptively.
Really, so, so the, the assisted living section has one goal, this has a sort of a different goal. I mean, and, yes, of course, you know, it's, assisted living is, like, like any other use that we permit, is, is something we, you know, we permit it because we want it. But, but this overlay is specifically for, intended for allowing adaptive reuse of significant structures and giving people some option other than luxury condos. So, so, you know, that's really, so I guess, you know, it, it was done in the context of that.
So if somebody came forward with a notion of converting the motel at Irving and North Beacon to assisted living, would that be considered a, a significant building? Would they be allowed to just convert that?
It's allowed by special permit.
But that's allowed in that district, because that's in the.
Converting that exact building?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, or tear.
Well, actually, by converting it, that might actually be by right, if you really wanted to get into it, but.
Converting it to assisted living?
Yeah. So in, in, in 2018, the board created a substantial new addition, definition for assisted living under section 2.05, which describes all the details of what assisted living is, which is in keeping with the state's definition. And then under section 5.07 is the only other section that speaks to it, and that talks about including assisted living as well as independent living. And it specifically calls out, outside of the assisted living overlay zone, because it was not a separate section. And then it identifies the breakdown of requirements. So it's, like, like other uses, it's a use on the table. And so during the special permit process or permitting process, that, that's when the relevancy of the special permit review is, and the criteria of that is when we typically look at a use. So it's, it's just another use on our table. But with this overlay, as I said before, the, the point that we had originally was not to, it's, it wasn't to promote assisted living throughout town, and that's why there's not like four or five or 10 locations. It was to identify significant or important buildings or reuse situations that needed to be, that needed to have some more flexibility, and this was one tool and one mechanism to allow it.
And they're primarily former schools or former religious institutions that are in two-family zones. So, you know, you're kind of, you know, of course, as a school of religious use, you're, you know, that's allowed anywhere. But to convert that to something else versus, you know, it just, there's a, you know, there's a lot of pressure to sort of preserve bits of our history, you know, that, that significant structures. And this is just another, gives, gives the property owners another option versus, you know, what seems to be just going to condominiums. So that's really the intent of the overlay, as opposed to, you know, the, the other section with, with. I mean, you know, it's, it's really, you know, it's coming back to the council to vote on anyway, so, you know, it's, but, but I just wanted to assure you that it's, that, you know, we, we took this, we spent a lot of time in sort of changing this so we, we could understand, you know, something that makes sense. Because I think with this change, we, it will give us the opportunity to, to preserve some former notable buildings, as well as, you know, I, I think turning them into, if you look at the, sort of, the Coolidge School, the East Junior High School, that actually is a great use, you know, assisted living, to, to turn some of these former schools into assisted living, because it just, it really kind of works. And I think it works for the residents who need those services, and it works for the town to preserve sort of these iconic buildings. And anyway, Jeff, you had one more.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are you all set?
I'm all set, unless I have another question.
Is there anybody else? I hope not. Oh, yeah, everybody.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right? Can you hear me?
Talk a little louder.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Hi, I'm Sibella DeCarlo, I live in Watertown, and I happen to work at Neville Place in Cambridge. So talking about redesigning a beautiful historical building like Brigham House into an assisted living or independent really appeals to me. I see about, I don't know, 80 elderly, mostly between the ages of 60 to 100 years of age, loving, living in this old property where they have renovated and new apartments or studios, and then there are community rooms. And Brigham House is also in a nice area, I think, where you can walk into town or take a taxi or that kind of thing. So I do support that and assisted living and especially historical buildings. I'm just, don't think I understood how many apartments might be in this assisted living.
There's not a project. It's just a zoning amendment.
Oh. And did you say that 10% of the apartments would be low income, or?
There's, this is a zoning amendment, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not appropriate.
No, 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 there's just no, there's not a specific project in mind for the zoning amendment.
Okay.
A, a property had identified the concern about that. Currently, there's a 10% requirement for assisted living, and the amendment is to change it to 5%, which is what is required in other areas. So it's not about a specific project, it's about an opportunity for.
So we're going from 10% to just 5% affordable apartments?
It's, again, it's, it's, it's the minimum, it's the maximum, no, it's the minimum, sorry, I have a cold.
Yeah.
It's the minimum amount of affordable that would be required in any scenario where you use the overlay district, but there isn't a specific property that it's applied to right now.
Wow, okay.
So it's supportive of the idea?
Yeah, that comes as a surprise to me, because we have mostly low income and moderate apartments in, in Cambridge with this assisted living. But every town is different. Thank you.
So, hate to ask, are there other speakers? I guess not. So could we restate our, our added sentence here and vote on this?
Well, I think it's, it's something that needs to be crafted. I have not seen the language that Benny was referring to.
Carrie Wood.
So I don't know that I can, I mean, I could, I could change this, but I don't think people want to stare at their shoes while I do it.
Carrie, I'm just wondering, in the, in the first sentence that's on the page now, it says, "to encourage and guide redevelopment, blah, blah, blah." Would adding this meet what you're trying to accomplish? If it were to say, "to encourage assisted living options in Watertown and guide the redevelopment," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Sure. I think anything that, that tries to present Watertown having a supportive view towards assisted living facilities beyond the private partnerships with public-private partnerships and redevelopment of old historic buildings, I think would speak a little bit better about the community and its values, but.
All right, so.
I think what you said is an improvement over what's there.
Yeah, okay. So do we have a motion?
Okay.
Remember, this is to the town council.
Right, right. So I move that the planning board recommend to the town council to amend the two parts of the assisted living overlay district, section 511, to add language as modified by Clarifying intent and purposes and change the affordable housing requirements.
Yeah, he was reading right here.
Yeah. Well, that's his language. Okay, let's start again. I move that the planning board recommend to the town council the approval of the amendment to two parts of the assisted living overlay district, with the change to section 511, A, intent and purpose, first paragraph, to encourage, and this is the addition, assisted living options in Watertown, with the rest of it being as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right, all right.
Good. So we have one other item here. A section 8.00, a removal of soil, it's called. Are you leaving? You're coming back.
So, would you like me to give the staff report? And so this is a, a second public hearing on a zoning amendment? And so after I give the staff report, then it's open, it's a hearing, so if the public wants to weigh in, that would?
Exactly.
Okay. So this one's actually very short. On, on June 10th, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, let's see, sorry, there had been some concern about a project that had created some noise and vibration during the removal of ledge from a construction site in Watertown. And because of that, the council, Committee on Economic Development and Planning, looked at the ordinance and worked with Community Development and Planning to suggest options. Under section 8.0, staff suggested that there could be language added to require a community meeting under this section when there is a vehicle-mounted heavy machinery that is removing out crops or ledge as part of a, a building permit process. And so staff suggests that the language as added, which would reads as, "if ledge is to be removed when incidental to and in connection with a byright project using a vehicle-mounted hydraulic jackhammer or rock breaker, then a community meeting in accordance with WZO section 9.03 will be held prior to any such removal to discuss the extent of the removal, methods to be utilized, and the timing and durations of such work, unless the removal is determined by the director of the Department of Community Development and Planning to be less than a significant quantity." And so this is, this is a single, I think that's a single sentence added to the section to require procedure as identified already in our ordinance, in an instance, if there is an instance where the, where this situation could occur again.
So any board questions or discussion of this item?
Sure.
Just, where it says, "using a vehicle-mounted hydraulic jackhammer or rock breaker," it's
pretty specific.
Right, yeah.
And I'm wondering whether it's too limited and whether it provides for a loophole that none of us have thought of. I'm wondering whether we, we would say, in connection with a byright project, by any means. So in other words, if, if ledge is being removed or quarried or whatever, by any, whatever the means and methods are, that this applies.
Could be dynamite.
Right. Could be blasting, exactly.
Yeah, I certainly think that that's reasonable, and because of the section below, it still provides that ability to make that determination. So if it's some other means and it's even more minor.
Right. Right.
Then there's a way for it to be determined that it's not triggering the requirement.
Yeah, I would say also that the director, if it is, like, I can see what this, the director's saying, it's an insignificant quantity, basically. It's like, you come up, it happens all the time. You're doing excavation, there's a little dome of rock and you got to get rid of it in the middle of it. I would think that we should put that, that should be in writing as well, to protect the town, just so there is no, like, calling up Steve Magoon, for example, and say, "Hey, can I do this?" And he said, "Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah." You know, so not that he would do that. But I just think having it in writing somewhere so there's some record will protect, be protective of the town. Because other towns, I looked, other towns have actually an earth, earth removal permit process, where they have an earth removal committee and they go through this whole thing. I'm not saying we need to do that, but.
Yeah, earth removal is reviewed by DPW, so it's a separate.
So, but as long as it's in writing somehow, there's, there's some sort of record.
So, I think it's, yeah.
What are we adding then? What are we changing?
I would just say, after it says, "Department of Community Development and Planning," I would just put comma, "in writing, comma."
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
My suggestion is, you know, open.
Can I build on that for you? Is that okay?
What's that?
Can I build on that?
Absolutely.
I would suggest that, that the term, "then a significant quantity" ought to go away and it should be defined as less than one, one full day of operations. So, if they waive the meeting, that means the whole thing could be done in almost less time than it would take to arrange the community meeting.
I see.
So, it's not worth proceeding with. But I don't think it should just be up to any individual to say.
Yeah.
In, in writing or otherwise, that, oh, it's an insignificant quantity, because that's a value judgment that I don't think anybody should be making. I think we should define it, whether what I said, it makes sense, I don't know, but.
Before, it was about the amount and, and that would be about the time. So, if they got a whole bunch more machinery in there, then you could get it all done really quick, but it could be more impactful. I mean, I'm just, this was about the quantity of actual removal, too, so I'm, I'm not, it's up to you to decide.
Pointed out, you don't always know that.
Right.
In advance. And when the decision has to get made, you can't suddenly call in the troops and say, "I need three more machines." They're not available. So, so I think it.
Or if the machine breaks?
I mean, somebody has to be able to make the judgment call. I think, yeah, you don't want to just call up Steve or whoever and say, "Come on over and take a look, what do you think?" It wouldn't hurt to have a process where there has to be a meeting because there's the possibility of ledge removal. I mean, I, I remember conducting a meeting, explaining to the neighbors why blasting wouldn't have any impact on them. But it's, and it, it really does. But I, I would err on the side of, look, we, we might have an issue here, there's evidence that there's ledge, you can't tell how much there is, so let's have a meeting and just tell the neighborhood, this is going to happen. Where's come to worse, it won't be as bad as you think.
So, do we know how we're amending that? You're, you're going to have to do it when you make your, any other comments? Any comments from the, oh, no.
Okay, yes, again. So, we actually discussed.
Throw another question, everybody.
Vinnie Pichurley, District C Council. We actually discussed with Council of Felton, or Council, then we discussed this. And the, as you know, there's ledge everywhere. Most ledge, you don't even know it's there until you're actually trying to dig the footing for your garage and then two feet below the surface you hit ledge. And, you know, with, with tobacco, you can remove most of it and it's not really an issue. There is no problem, and this is why I just have a little bit of concern about the proposed language change. There's no problem with removing ledge with an excavator or tobacco, because it's loose and it's flaky and you can just kind of pick away at it and, and get it done.
It's friable, is the word, right?
Uh, yes, sort of. That's a great technical term. So, so, we want, we did not want to, and I understand, this is only for byright projects with a building permit, it's not for anything with a special permit that would require blasting, like, you know, Arsenal Yards or some other big project, that, you know, is, is a completely different story, because that can be handled, it's the condition of the special permit. This is really for people that are doing a two-family house in a, the T-zone and they hit some ledge as they're digging foundation. So, so the question is, you know, the problem isn't with removing ledge with an excavator or tobacco. The problem is bringing in a hydraulic rock breaker, which is, which is what happened in this one particular site for two weeks. And it just, you know, it was as bad as blasting, you know, it just, the relentlessness. And it, if you haven't seen, you know, this in operation, it is just, it is quite, you know, it, it's very disruptive. And so, so we really want to be clear that it wasn't about all ledge, it was, it was, if you're going to bring in a hydraulic rock breaker for, and you're not going to bring it in for one day, you're going to bring it in for, you know, a week. We wanted to have just a proper notification to the, to the abutters so they can just ask questions and plan accordingly. That's really, it's all about notification, but we didn't want to burden every, like, every other project in Watertown where, you know, if you're digging and you, and you hit ledge, it's like the project has to stop and now you have to schedule a meeting for two weeks. So, I just want to be, be clear that that's, this is really sort of incidentalized.
I think we got the point.
So, anyway, that's just, thank you.
Right. And I was thinking the other way, the, the more significant, rather than the less significant, I made that comment. So, what you may, says makes sense. Like, if you can just scrape it with a bucket, then you don't need to go through this.
That's what they did in my yard, you know, and they just pulled up.
Right. Exactly. It breaks.
They could only get out three feet, but the foundation sits on.
So, any other comments from the?
I have one.
Attorney.
So, the community meeting, I, I guess the, the short way of asking this question is, I mean, is the community meeting in and of itself a way to solve the problem? A community meeting, to me, it's like, it's like informative, nothing really substantive, I don't think, comes out of it, other than the neighbors knowing what's going to happen. But what's the recourse? Like, that may not be a zoning issue anyway, but it seems to me that the community meeting could be, here's what we're going to do, here's how long it's going to take, deal with it. But then maybe, yeah, it's outside of the purview of zoning.
It's funny, Steve and I just talked about that today. So, the community meeting process for this, unlike our, our standard community meeting that we have, is that it's not, it's not in preparation to go to the planning and zoning board, but it's in preparation to do a, a project. So, it's, it's more about, you know, the discussion about the timing and how it's going to work and what they're going to be doing and what those direct abutters, what their schedules are like. And so, how, it's a conversation that can potentially minimize some of the worst of the impacts or, or even more. So, it's, it, it, it would allow a conversation, a two-sided conversation between abutters and the, and the entity who would be doing, doing the work.
And is the goal, then, that the, that the abutters would at least be more aware of what their recourse might be if there were to be damage to their property or?
Yeah.
Anything like that?
That could certainly be. I mean, and that's, I mean, that's part of any construction project, I would imagine, but, but that was the intent, is that. So, so you get an understanding. So, like, if, if someone is, you get the details of the back and forth between those direct abutters and that, and both, both sides are aware of what the situation's going to be and the time, timeframe for it to last and that they're at least in preparation for that, so.
Let's amend the language.
Okay. So, it empowers the abutter, basically, with the knowledge.
To certain, yeah.
Um, yeah, having been involved in these, I, I see a lot of room for abuse of this, because when you have a, a conversation where you present, you know, this is what we're going to be doing, we're going to be making a lot of noise for two weeks during these hours, it's sort of inviting people to say, "Well, let's strike a deal. How about you don't do it on this morning or this day because I have to get, because I get headaches," you know, or. I think, I'm almost thinking it might be more of a service to all parties to, to send an abutters letter out and say, you know, here's a notice, this is going to be happening if you have some specific issues about it, here's a contact number, here's a person you can talk to. But not raise expectations that you can go to a meeting and say, "Well, you know, I, I get these headaches in the morning and you can't do this and my recourse, what's my recourse? You're going to put me up in hotel or something?" I, I, I wouldn't want to raise expectations past what's really going to happen. I think possibly, just putting a letter out there might be more effective.
You have to go over there. Yes. Lisa, come on.
Thank you, Chairman. My name's Lisa Felton, I'm District B counselor and was, and was on the committee with these discussions. Just to give you a little perspective, yes, we went, had a full discussion about whether to include a meeting and Steve Magoon and Gideon Staff was there, along with the residents that went through this. And it was recognized that this is not going to probably come up very often, given the severity, if you will, the extent of ledge presenting itself to be, need to be removed in this way. But that it is a unique situation and the two-way conversation would be beneficial instead of staff assuming that they know the needs of the residents in this particular area to have some more sensitivity. So, we did go back and forth on this. We felt like it wouldn't be abused because it would be a particular situation that's probably unusual, don't even know if it'll happen again, but wanted to present the opportunity to address everybody's concerns. Thank you.
So, one of the questions I have about this is, I mean, the question is, how wide a circle do you have? Because people some distance away will hear it and not know what it is.
Well, so the notice that we have?
Lots of?
It's three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet.
It's, it's abutters and abutters, it's the same notice that we have for all planning and zoning projects.
I was somewhere today where there was blasting going on and somebody came over and told another chap and me that in about five, 10 minutes, there was going to be some blasting. And so, they were telling other people, too, but it was, it was, it was, it was a public space, so.
Right.
But it was kind of interesting. And it was, and it happened and big deal, but, but it's a good thing you knew, because otherwise. So, I just worry, you, you hear, you know, you can hear a sound much further than three hundred feet, of course.
Right.
So, I guess you'll find out from your neighbor what, what the occasion was.
But, well, it would be advertised as any other thing is advertised, so it's the, those are the ones that would actually get the notice and then it would.
Yeah.
It, it would be sent out through the notification and then those neighbors could tell other neighbors as well.
So, do we have consensus here? Do we have a, have a motion that has?
I don't hear it.
We all have different opinions right now.
Can we make a consensus? It doesn't have to be what they want us to do, but what do we think ought to happen here? So, it sounds like, it sounds like, I mean, ideally, you know, make a big deal out of this, it'd be a meeting and it would follow up with letters. And the letter would say, "At the meeting, we decided X." Period. And you're going to blast on a week from Thursday.
No blasting.
Blasting's actually quieter.
But it could be blasting.
It's quieter than jackhammer.
It's true.
Yeah, could be.
It's.
So, my recommendation would be that this be a combination of meeting and follow-up with some kind of notification.
Well, if you look at this, Mr. Chairman, if you look at the section of the zoning that references the community meeting, they are required to produce minutes, you know, for the record and then, you know, whatever, whatever agreement with, with the abut. It's just, you know, I, I understand, you know, what Janet's saying, and this came up in our meeting, that we don't want to raise people's expectations, but it's no different than any other community meeting that developers have. And sometimes, you know, it, it's good to say, well, you know, you know, you know, whatever particular concern an abutter has, if the developer can work around it without any, you know, if they don't start till 10 instead of starting at eight, you know, I mean, there's so many things that really cost, don't cost the developer anything, it's just sort of being a good neighbor. And this allows just the discussion to happen. And whatever is agreed in the meeting, you know, they're, they're required, under the current existing zoning, to, to document what we've agreed to in minutes.
So, what they just said, which I think might be a, a reasonable, it's, it's kind of both. It's like, so have the community meeting and then send out a notice to the same abutters list with their, what Janet, I mean, you just said, suggested, to send in a butter letter with the details of what they're going to do.
Yeah.
So, that's like the, it's like what we would do with DPW, when DPW's doing a road project, we notify the direct abutters what, what's happening and when it's going to happen. And it's like, oh, you're not going to have access to your driveway for, you know, four days. So, so that would be, I mean, I would suggest that that's a reasonable compromise. It's like, you have a community meeting and that's just an informational meeting, you have the conversation and then you, and then you come up with what you're going to do.
Yeah, that's, that sounds like a.
And send it out. So, that'd be an additional sentence at the end.
Okay. I'll give you the track. Okay. So, I'm going to move that the planning board recommend to the town council changes to section eight, removal of soil, to amend section eight to add new language regulating the removal of ledge when performed by. Are we going to do any means or?
No, I think Vinnie's point was, I think we should leave that language.
Keeping it as is, okay.
Vehicle-mounted.
So, we'll keep the first paragraph of the proposed language as is. The second paragraph will read, "If ledge is to be removed when incidental to and in connection with a byright project, then a community meeting," so then we'll strike the vehicle-mounted hydraulic jackhammer, byright project, "then a community meeting in accordance with Watertown zoning board section 903 will be held prior to such removal, discuss extent of removal, methods utilized, timing and duration of such work." And then add, followed by a letter informing abutters of the agreed-on process.
So, do you need to give that marked up one to, maybe? So, is there a second?
Janet, did you say we were going to take out the vehicle-mounted?
Yeah, I'm confused on that part.
Um, yeah, to say by any means.
I think we, I think, yeah, I think we don't need to put that in there.
Okay, so we'll just leave that whole paragraph up until where it says, "Timing and duration of such work." Were we going to strike the last sentence there about community development? Less significant quantity.
Right?
It's pretty vague.
Yeah, we're going to either put in writing.
Yep.
In there.
Yeah.
After planning.
Yep.
And then the question was about the, how do you make significant quantity less vague? I don't know that I have an answer right off the top of my head. You could pick one up, like, one cubic yard, two cubic yards.
No.
Or like a time, like you said, Carrie.
It's not the engineering department, so.
The problem.
I mean, my own opinion is, is significant quantity, you know, this, is it? I think that's fine, frankly. I mean, there's got to be some vagueness in this.
I mean, if it's, if it's sort of authorized in writing that it is significant, then it's, somebody's on the record.
Okay. So, the first paragraph remains the same. The second paragraph says, "If ledge is to be removed when incidental to and in connection with a byright project using a vehicle-mounted hydraulic jackhammer or rock breaker," I don't know if we want to add blasting, but, "then a community meeting in accordance with WZO section 9.03 will be held prior to any such removal to discuss the extent of removal methods to be utilized, timing, duration of such work." Then we can continue to that entire, continue with this paragraph in its entirety and then add this, add in writing after significant quantity. And then say, "The meeting will be then followed by a letter informing abutters of the agreed-upon process or procedures." So, we're just adding the words in writing and then the sentence, it'll be followed by?
A letter.
A letter.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Perfect. Well done. Thank you.
And Gideon, that, that letter would go out to everybody, not just the ones who attended the meeting, right?
It'd be a butter's, it'd be in a butter's notice.
Not everybody's going to make it, anyway.
Butter.
So, it's the definition that we would have already used for the initial notice?
Yeah. Yeah.
To be consistent.
So, we also have a couple of cases to deal with tonight. So, we also have a couple of cases to deal with tonight.
Yeah.
So, one is 48 Phillips Street.
49.
49 Phillips Street.
49 Phillips Streets.
Yeah, 49 is more like it. Sorry.
Ron Goode.
Do we have the screen?
I'm going to try. They, see, we talked so long that they turned off.
I know, they run out of electricity. Go ahead, David. We're just trying to get the drawings up.
So, I'm asking for permission to turn the single-family unit, add an addition on and make it a two-family.
Oh, just keep going, it's, it's either going to work or won't.
Yeah. It's all, so all, I've worked with Gideon in the, the planning process to, we're in this SC zone, which is a single-family conversion zone. It's currently, single families, two families, three families, condos. It's kind of got every breadth of housing in it. It's right behind the Elon development and we have not pushed the boundaries as far as size and scope of what we could try to go for. We wanted just to put another unit on. It's 1,800 square feet. It fits in with the farmhouse style that is existing right now. You know, we've, we've made a lot of decisions just based on what the recommendation of the planning board has been, so.
So, do we have a staff report?
Sure. Sorry. My voice is starting to get worse. So, this is a unusual district in that it allows a, it's the single-family conversion zone. We haven't seen a lot of projects doing conversions of, of houses or building new two-families in this zone. And so, the, part of the intent of that, although it's not completely spelled out anymore in the ordinance, is that there's, there's an idea that you want to try to preserve the integrity of the original structure that is within this district. And so, we, we talked with Ron about some scenarios and he came up with a plan with the site where it allows the, the front of the house, which was built in the 1800s, to be substantially preserved. And actually, the, the connection was an addition that was added to the rear of this house many, several years ago, prior to Ron Goode, sorry, whatever, owning the property. And so, they proposed a plan that adds an addition to the rear, but it certainly doesn't maximize the site or the amount of area that you could build, whether it was a single-family addition or a two, a two-family, if, if you were to get a special permit. So, because it's in this zone, any conversion or any two-family requires a special permit. And so, the criteria are the four criteria rather than just, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? So, staff went back and forth and discussed some scenarios and all the other piece that's interesting is that this is modular or it's a factory-built building, but then there's pieces of it that will be site-built to allow the design to fit with the existing house and connect to it. So, staff looked at the previous permitting history and found that it was, there was this one extension to the rear and that the four conditions for a special permit were met. The site is appropriate. The existing structure is from 1890. It is a smaller single-family in this zone. This zone has a mix of both smaller, single families as well as much larger, more Victorian-era houses. A lot of those houses have been converted or are pre-existing, non-conforming between two, three, some four families. So, it's a mix, it's a mixed neighborhood with a lot of the existing fabric in place. And so, the idea of an additional two-family rather than a single-family is inappropriate for this particular site for allowing a two-family conversion and addition. Staff also believe that adding a second unit would not adversely affect the neighborhood. It's maintaining the existing streetscape and the existing facade of the house and actually the sites as well. Their staff suggests that the plot plan should be updated to show a four-foot landscape buffer to improve the, to, to improve the conditions for vehicles and pedestrians at the street level. So, a maximum, the driveway should be no more than 22 feet in width, which is the current ordinance requirements when you do new construction. And it should be no deeper than 41 feet in depth, which is two 18-foot parking spaces plus the five-foot buffer from the front sidewalk. The current plan doesn't reflect that, but that was a condition of the suggested approval and hopefully that can be updated prior to the zoning board if, if you move to have this move forward. And as far as facilities go, this is a criteria of the ordinance, but it's, it's one that is reviewed through DPW and it appears that there are utilities, et cetera, that are adequate for this additional single unit on the street. So, they would require DPW review prior to the building permit to ensure that all of the stormwater and other requirements are met. And with that, staff recommends conditional approval with the caveat that the, the plan set that was created by the Westchester Module Homes be updated to show all the dimensions to ensure that they are compliant with zoning and the update to the plot plan to show the updated parking area prior to zoning approval. And there's additional condition that speaks to the driveway and the, the maximum dimensions that it could be. So, that's the staff report. We recommend conditional approval. Thank you.
So, any questions to the board?
I don't. I, I looked at the site. It seems like a really good solution to me.
It's a little hard to hear if you guys can speak. I, we heard you, but just, as you all know, the.
At least they're listening. That's good.
Does anybody else?
Jason did. Sure. Yeah, just two questions. Well, I'll, I'll start by saying, yeah, it's, it's a really nice, big site. So, I think that the, the footprint of the new addition is definitely not like overwhelming in any way, unlike a lot of applications that we see. So, I don't have any concern about that. I, I noticed that though the, the zoning table you put NA for existing side yard setback left and right, but I would assume that would have to, you'd have to put something in there for the ZBA hearing.
Is that in the application?
Yeah. It just says, I see the, I see the required and the proposed, but the column, the existing column just says NA.
Well, that's the application, so once it's been submitted, it's usually, I mean, we'll, we'll note that it, but it's stamped in already as well, so it's hard to change the application, but we can look at it and see if it needs to be fixed. If it, is it a typo or is it just?
Just says NA. Yeah. I mean, I thought this is what, what the, what it goes by when it's submitted to the ZBA, so.
This is an informational table. I don't ever trust this over a plot plan. My, my personal take on it is the stamped plot plan is, is going to trump anything if it, but I, but I appreciate that you looked at this and we will note it.
The existing condition is non-conforming and the proposed condition is the same as the existing, then there's no change. So, that, that sets one out of you. If the existing condition conforms and the proposed one doesn't, I think the zoning folks might want to know that.
I, I think that the reason they put NA is because the existing, from their perspective, this addition, it's not applicable because it's not there. But the reality is that the house has a substantial setback on one side and it's, and the existing situation on the other side is substantially under size on the existing house, but the addition isn't there and when they build it, it approves it.
I get it. It's not pertaining to the merit of the application, just, but on the plot plan, I'm just curious. It says side setback and the one that's listed here is 3.0, which is obviously the more restrictive of the two, but doesn't it typically have to have two, if there's two different side setbacks, shouldn't it actually show three feet and whatever the other huge one is?
If I can address that for you. So, the original house, which in the photo you're looking at is the white house, like the one that's closer to the street, on the right side of that, as you're looking at the house, is three feet off the property line. So, I think about 10 years ago, they put an addition on and that addition onto the rear of that existing structure is, is within all the setback requirements. This proposed addition would also be within all the side setback requirements, so it's 12 feet and 10 feet. And so, and Gideon has noted that there are a couple of things that need to be addressed prior to the zoning hearing, which we're more handling that, so.
Okay. It's just sort of a helpful hint to clean things up before you get there.
Yeah.
So, the other question I had was, I just, I, I don't see a landscape plan anywhere. And the primary question I had about it is, so you have this existing asphalt driveway and the plot plan actually shows that driveway pretty much staying at its existing boundaries and then just adding, I can't really read it on the plot plan, it's, it's kind of blurred out, but just like a hatch pattern. I'm trying to understand, like, are you suggesting that you're going to redo the whole thing out of one material or just literally add beyond the extent of the existing asphalt driveway some kind of material?
So, first and foremost, there, there will be a setback requirement, which Gideon mentioned, a four-foot landscape buffer, so that will be added in, that will be in the zoning hearing. And then, the whole driveway will be repaved. It won't be just an addition around the existing.
Okay. So, so it is all intended to be asphalt?
Right.
Okay. All right. So, this will be presumably updated to show that that's one bituminous driveway.
It will.
All right. That's it. Thanks.
Any other?
Just to clarify what you're saying, so the, the four-foot landscape buffer to the side, is that going to extend all the way to the sidewalk or no?
Correct.
It will?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, any questions from the audience?
Lisa Theltnar, District B, excuse me, Town Councilor. I've received several inquiries, people are confused about because we don't allow front yard parking and the entrances look like the, and steps are all being changed. And so, obviously, the current driveway is in the side, to the side of the house, but with the addition, it becomes the front of the house. So, that was a question. And people are also a little concerned about the materials that are being used in this historic neighborhood. And lastly, just of note that this will be the first home where an addition is built to the side of the house in the neighborhood, all the other properties and in general, rear additions are put on when conversions or additions are built with maybe a door that faces the, the street or the side. So, I think that covers it. There are several neighbors who couldn't be here tonight. And, oh, I'm sorry. The other thing is that this, apparently, the homeowner is a landscaping business and so he will move vehicles when asked, but there are a lot of vehicles that sometimes make it difficult for people to get in their driveway, so there's some concern about parking and use of the driveway at this property. There are no granite curbs, I believe, here in Phillips Street. Thank you.
So, I'm happy to address all that. One, I am a landscape designer, so, fault me for not having the landscape design in your plot plan there, but, so a couple of things. I don't store any equipment in my house. I have a personal, or I have a work truck. It's a, it's not a dump truck. It's my sales truck and that's, that's the only piece of equipment that's ever on my property unless my crews are mowing my lawn. So, I've never had any complaints from anybody on my, in my neighborhood about any equipment, so I do apologize if, if I've ever caused any issues in the neighborhood. The purpose and the reason for doing the design as we did, because I think most of the times what you'll see in a, in a new development or an addition is the house that is currently existing basically just tacking on another house with the, the roof line going in the same direction on the back of the property. It's actually easier to do that. I wouldn't mind doing that. This is more historic and from all the input that we've had from the planning board, fits the location much more correctly and would be a more aesthetically pleasing unit. And so, it does, it does not address the, the parking in front of the unit, but that's currently where the existing driveway is. And in order to get the, design the house to make it look like a farmhouse, which is keeping with the existing architecture, we would leave the, the parking in, in front.
Just one clarification. This happens sometimes. He's only met with planning staff, not the planning board. This is the first time he's been introduced to you, so this is your opportunity to provide comments. So, I just wanted to make sure there's a clarification just for the public that he has met with planning staff. We talked about the historic nature of the structure, et cetera. As far as the, the parking, this has come up before and from a perspective of a rear wing, that is not, from the zoning enforcement officer, that is not interpreted as the front facade of the house. And so, you can have parking with part of the structure to the rear of that as part of the, the condition. I mean, you, you could change the driveway to have a single driveway that goes up the side on both sides of the house, but that would be disruptive or you could have it go into the rear and it could go all the way, the driveway could go all along. There's lots of opportunities for changing the driveway, but because there's an existing apron in the location and because of the design of the house with the main house and facade up near the street, our, our belief is that this, this is compliant with the code from that perspective and it's not considered twenty-yard parking. So, just, just two clarifications.
Can I add something about that? The, the case that's been continued many times and finally withdrawn tonight is what you were describing as the alternative to like just extrude the same footprint to the back of the site and definitely that would not be as nice a use of the site as I think this kind of farmhouse layout is, so.
Yeah.
I think it's, this is what I would want to see if you were going to add to that house, so.
It's, it's been my intention to create a second unit. That's been my hope and intention, but definitely within thinking about the community itself and, and not just trying to blast as many square feet as I can. And so, I think it's a really well-designed property, so I'd hope you recognize that.
So, is your intent that the second unit is a unrelated occupant? I mean, it's not a family member? I mean, they're, they're quite close together. This is not a house for somebody's brother and sister and family. It's, it's just on the market.
Correct.
Okay. So, any other questions from members of the audience? Getting a smaller group here. So, in that case, we entertain a motion, I think.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the planning board recommend to the zoning board appeals, the approval of the requested special permit under Section 5.01.1B as the proposed project meets the necessary criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, you go to the zoning board in two weeks.
Thank you.
So, these four people came in right at the beginning, but anyway, so three Belknap Terrace is probably the next one up.
My name is Norman Kerlop. I'm the architect for the project. My office is in 21 Half Road, Belmont, Mass. This particular project is actually adding a, expanding the second floor of the existing house. We have. We have dorms at the front and dorms at the back currently, and those have been removed, and the full second floor is now being utilized for the bedrooms and the bathrooms. There is no bathroom upstairs currently, there's only one bathroom in the first floor level, so, we're creating bedrooms upstairs and two bathrooms in that second floor. The roof lines that we've attempted kind of replicate the Cape look, we're saying that what we have as a second floor is kind of a dormant, then, on the side elevations, the rakes that we have introduced give the impression that this is a single-story building with shed roofs at the back and the front. We've shown the underside elevation in a recent drawing that was sent late, how it compares the current roof line with the existing roof line, the height of it, and we also have some photographs of the existing buildings near the proposed addition, and they have this kind of rake extension at the sides, and the image that's created by the shed dormant back and front. So, we're trying to replicate this aspect, which is from the neighborhood, and all the homes in the neighborhood are two-story, just like this one, the height of the building is within the allowed limit, and there's no change in the footprint of the current We're keeping the same exterior materials, which is humbly final siding. The windows are half-grid, as you see on the elevations. We have some cobalts to give some character to the building at the eve lines, and those are shown on the front and side elevations. The garage is in the basement, and it will stay there, so there's no alteration in parking or paved areas. This is in nutshell the whole project, if the owner would like to address any issue regarding the need for them for their current space and a growing family, you may like to hear that from them. Thank you.
Hey, Norm. Mark Conti, this is my wife, Jamie Conti, so thank you, ladies and gentlemen, on the planning board. As Norm said, we're really just trying to expand on our, our current home by adding a little additional square footage to the upstairs. Currently, we have a three-and-a-half-year-old and a one-and-a-half-year-old, space is tight. At 6'2", the headspace on the second floor is not conducive for my brain safety in the morning, so really, just trying to expand on the living space to make it more utilized for a growing family, as, as Norm said. My wife and I have both lifelong residents of Watertown, we've been in this home for three years, and we'd like to stay, and doing, moving forward in this project will allow us to do so with a reasonable space for our family.
So, may we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, I think they, they went into the details of what the request was, it's a special permit findings, oh, sorry, I turned off the mic. In, in particular, they did a, a nice job of showing, I asked them to show the, the zoning envelope that you're actually allowed to build within, it's a, it's a very limiting area on the site, it's a very unique property, and the, the, basically, there's a, a small area in the front that would comply with, you know, current code requirements, and so, they came up with a minimum amount of mass to allow the, the second floor to be fully utilized. The staff report did note that the existing ridge line was, is remaining, but as you can see, they actually are expanding it by about five feet, which is substantially less than if you were going to do a, a larger style, like, like a colonial style or other style of, of house. So, they're, they're not expanding it and trying to maximize an attic space or the half-story side of things as well. So, from the perspective of the special permit findings staff finds that, that to utilize the, the house and the property in a reasonable way, the addition that they're doing is, is in keeping with the existing structure's design, and also with the neighborhood, and is appropriate and not substantially more impactful than the existing condition. So, the current Cape Cod style or bungalow style is, is an appropriate style that allows the maximum use of the second floor while minimizing the impacts to the neighbors, and it's, it's a nice-looking design. So, staff recommends conditional approval of the requested modification, with the caveat that the section that references the main roof staying as is, needs to be updated prior to the zoning board.
So, any questions from the board? Comments?
Is your architect still here? Okay. I think, I, I agree, this is a very appropriate way to add space, we did something similar in our, because we have two kids and all that. My only comment, which you, and, you know, it's, it's entirely up to you guys, but I'm looking at the new bedroom floor, and there's three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and two baths just have showers, not tub, no tub, and I, having a one-year, one-and-a-half-year-old grandchild, I know tub is a big deal. So, I'm looking and thinking, you know, for now and for the future, you might reconfigure your, your bath, your bathrooms and closets a little bit better. I think there's the, there's room for it, I could sketch some ways I could see doing it, but if you're going to have a master bedroom and two bedrooms on a floor, you probably want to have one tub.
At least one of them.
At least one of them be a tub.
Shall we, shall we look at the first-floor bathroom?
Yeah, I see you've got one there.
There is a, what do we have there, a tub or a shower?
Yeah, you have a tub there, so it's not like you don't have a tub in the house, but you might.
Yeah, there is a tub in the house, I think the owner's preference is to have a shower rather than a tub. Tub, as you know, is cheaper to provide. The only advantage of the shower, it's easier to go in and out, and people kind of feel lazy to walk into a tub and stay there, so it's more efficient and effective.
I'm, I'm just recommending.
But it's a, it's a use that, I, I would pass you the comments to the, to the user, and, you know, they, they may like to change it, or whatever else they would like to do.
Otherwise, I, I think it's fine.
Thank you.
So, what do you do in the meantime? Do you move out while this all happens?
Yeah, so, I mean, we'd have to look into it with, sorry, if you can't hear me, our contractors were hoping to get, you know, once this all gets, hopefully approved, we haven't really gotten to that part yet. My parents still live locally on Moore Street, and they've been willing to take my children in, I'm not sure about us, hopefully they have to, and his mother-in-law's, my mother-in-law, his mother is also close by on the Watertown-Waltham Line. Worst-case scenario, I do have an aunt who has a income property on Union Street that her mother-in-law travels around, so that might be vacant, but we would hopefully not have to live through it with two small kids very much, so that is our intent, would be to find someplace to stay.
So, any other?
Just a comment that Jason made last time, the dimensional table, or the data table, says one-and-a-half stories, I don't think the zoning board would look at that and say it's a one-and-a-half stories, we might just want to put that to, to, ten minutes of discussion.
Just a reminder to try to, your microphones are all getting really far away from you, and then you lean back, so then it's even harder for anyone to hear, especially in the audience.
Gideon, just in the conditions, just need to note that this new drawing was submitted on the September 10th, because they're noting the January 14th drawings.
And we've requested that all the drawings have dimensions put on them, so that it's more reflective of what, you can see what the differences are.
Yeah, and that would have actually answered my question, it's kind of funny, I, I drew this sketch at home because something looked wrong, and I drew a dashed line of what I thought the existing roof was when I compared them, and then come tonight to see pretty much the same thing, so. I guess what it speaks to is there was a discrepancy somewhere in the roof height, and I guess what, what it's saying is that the existing elevations were incorrect, and it showed the roof too tall in the existing one. The point being, you are raising the roof.
We, we are, yes, and, and the misinterpretation was on my part when I was filling out the application, I misinterpreted the email between Norm and Eric, so that's totally of my fault, we, we did clarify in conversation with Gideon over this past week, that the ridge height is indeed raising, but still within the means of the, the allowable height.
Right, it's just, yeah, something seemed off on the drawings, and then I.
And from the staff perspective, I also apologize, I was actually on vacation for a substantial portion of the time for review, so I actually reviewed it just, you know, around the same time as you guys, probably, so, and I saw, saw those issues, so.
I was a late submittal, I don't know whether you have that in the package, that shows the height of the existing house?
Yeah, right here.
So, that's, that's the correct one, so whatever it was on the surveyor drawing is adjusted.
Well, it wasn't the surveyor drawings, it was actually the existing elevations.
Existing elevation?
Yeah.
Whatever is, is on the recent one, that's a correct one.
So, any other questions from the audience, which is even smaller now? So, in that case, I think we're ready for a recommendation or a motion.
Okay, I recommend that the planning board recommend to this, I move that the planning board recommend to the zoning board of appeals, conditional approval of the requested special permit finding under section 4.06A, as the proposed additions meet the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, you go to the planning, the zoning board in two weeks. Yeah. So, we have.
Apparently, there's one, one.
Our friends in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we should go home, too. So, I think we have a little Arsenal Yards signage request to address.
Yes.
Hopefully, briefly.
Is that on the agenda?
Yeah. At the end.
Okay.
I'm Tom Wilder with Wilder Companies, representing Arsenal Yards, thank you for the opportunity to be here once again. We're back to talk about signage on the west side of the garage, we call the B-Garage at Arsenal Yards, so, thank you for the feedback last time, we've brought with us Chris Sheen from Leverage Design, who's worked with us on the site signage and graphics throughout, and a very creative, thoughtful gentleman, very experienced with these kinds of developments, so, I think we took the feedback from last time and thought about how to create a separation between the civic expression and the commercial expression, and, you know, I think, you remember, our desire is to have that commercial presence on that side of the garage, we feel like, you know, our retailers and our major retailers do lack some identity coming from the west, and we thought that was an opportunity on the garage, but we also recognize that there was a desire to have a civic expression as well, and I would admit that we didn't do a great job designing it, we had presented a concept, I think we've done a little bit more design, I think it's still open to discussion, but I think Chris will show you a couple of different options that create that separation, and show how we could coexist between having that civic expression leading to the park, and still having an opportunity for the retailers to have their expression on that side. So, I'm going to give it to Chris, and he's got a presentation he'll, he'll show you guys.
Good evening, my name is Chris Sheen from Leverage Design Group. As Tom mentioned, I'm going to be taking through the latest concept.
Not, not so quickly. Chris, we're not understanding this, a little slower, okay?
Mm-hmm. I'm in. Blinking.
Do apples have, like, a thing, like, to change it so it knows that, sometimes with the double adapter, they don't automatically recognize?
Yeah, I'll try that. Usually, this, this works right off the bat. Yeah.
No, I already did that.
Yes, yeah. Let's try it.
You could try using this one, this adapter.
It's supposed to be the civic side.
It's still recommended. Because there was a little.
It works last time.
He's thinking about it.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, guys, sorry. Sorry, I paid extra for the Mac, too. Yeah, so I will take you through the Arsenal Yards Building B facade, as Tom mentioned. We have two options to show you tonight, obviously, still in concept. First, kind of looking at our inspiration for this, the large image on the right is the Corcoran Museum in DC, and we like this approach because it has a very similar experience to what's happening with the garage, in that, from one perspective, we want folks to not be able to see the banners, and from the other perspective, coming down the street, we want folks to be aware of the brand's identity in both locations. So, this is kind of a quick inspiration.
So, let me ask you once more, a little slower, okay? Keep talking really quick, quickly.
One of the things we wanted to look at was the evolution of the typeface for Arsenal Park. In the top-right corner is the existing sign for Arsenal Park. One of the challenges we have with signage is that's a very thin typeface, it's very difficult to read in some signage aspects, so the image in the middle there, the black image, is our approach to kind of evolve the typeface to something be a little more, a little bolder, a little, with a little more contrast, that will look better in some of the signage elements we're about to show you. So, looking at option A, this is the elevation of the, the garage, the, the organization on the columns is not even, so one of the things we wanted to do was break up the space with the blue representing the tenant banners, banners above, there's four of them, and the Arsenal Yards banners below them, and separate in equal spacing, and we'll show you what that looks like in a second, but, Arsenal Park, sorry. This is a quick section of the two banners, on top, obviously, we have the tenant banner, it's about three feet by about 22 feet in size, below is the Arsenal Park banner, which is the same three-feet size, and it's about 10 feet, 10 feet, 10 inches sized for, for This is a view looking at, kind of coming in to the park, and one of the things we wanted to point out is we also have a monument sign that we're replacing for the park, you can see here in the lower-left corner, about a six-foot-tall monument sign that has the Arsenal Park identity on it, that brings folks into the drive, and in the back, you can start to see the expression of the tenant banners above, as well as the Arsenal Park banners below. This is just another view, just a little bit closer in, and this is kind of the shot right below the actual banner, so you can see, it's a series of 13 individual banners, in our minds, these are just exterior-grade vinyl banners with graphics printed on it, we chose a green for the park identity, and white typed, so it really popped and had a really high contrast. Of course, we can talk about other colors and other typeface and other images, but we like the expression of having this Arsenal Park logo or its identity being split up over 13 of these banners, so that as you approach this, you will read it completely, but from the other angle, it's completely invisible. And this is just another view of those. You can start to see how those two things that sort of coexist in a coordinated opportunity, where the tenant banners exist above and the Arsenal Park banners exist below them. In our minds, they're all the same application, they're the same vinyl, it's the same armature to hold these, and it's the same lighting with a simple downlight LED.
Chris, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I usually do that, but you're saying you can read that, and I'm saying I can't.
Gary, it's really hard to hear you. Your microphone's really bothering me.
Did anybody not hear me? All right. First of all, I apologize for interrupting Chris. That was the most important part to hear, I think. I guess what you're saying is not what I'm experiencing, and I'm wondering, what is the benefit of fragmenting a sign into so many small parts that not very many minds short of maybe Casper Weinberg could put it together into the actual word or a couple of words? I know it's kind of an artsy thing, and you showed the precedent and all of that, but I don't think it's working.
Let's hear him through, and then, because there's others, there's another option.
Fair enough, but there was a question I just wanted to ask. I'm sorry.
But my question here is, what's the light green paving? What's that all about?
So that's the paved by path that is painted green that leads from the park out.
So the question I was not getting out, I guess, quickly enough, was, you're actually saying that, from some perspective, not the one we see on these renderings necessarily, but from somewhere that you've looked at it, sort of virtually, you can actually read what the sign says?
Yes, I mean, you know, it is a logo that's separated in 13 pieces. So, yes, from a lot of different views, it's gonna appear more of a texture, as opposed to reading a sign sort of face-on, in that respect, absolutely. In our minds, this was the best way to get the most brand across that facade, so that you can read it as you approach the park from Arsenal Yard Boulevard, as opposed, and then looking the other way, say, from the parking lot, you're gonna see almost an invisible line. That's the benefit of these options. But, again, it's not supposed to be read perfectly. The other option I can show you is just simple letters applied to the facade, as I'll show you in a second. So, option B removes the lower-level banners, just keeps the banners above on the top, as we just previously looked at, keeps the same monument below at the entrance, as we talked about. But you can see, we're simply applying painted metal letters to the facade of the garage. Let me get up a little closer, so you can see it. And again, this is the same typeface we talked about. Colors can be discussed, the typeface can be discussed, but in our minds, this is a flat application, painted metal letters onto the garage facade itself. There's a closer view of it. So, I mean, in that respect, I think that one's obviously a little bit easier to read. I think in our minds, the dynamic quality of option A was something that was interesting to us. You're gonna get that visual cue of the Arsenal Park identity without having a flat sign right in your face and along that facade.
Can I ask a question about option two? What's the, what is the material behind the letters that is not the concrete spandrel? Is it like a wire mesh? Or what are those letters mounted on? And it also looks a little different. If you go to option A, it doesn't look the same to me. I mean, that looks like the textured precast panels.
They're both the same.
Yeah.
They're the same, they're the same escape versus schedule.
Yeah. The option A is rendered a little more higher-quality, option B is just rendered with a flat sketch-up view, so I think you're seeing the graininess of that rendered compared to A and B.
But the idea is that you have, I mean, you have the same panels that you can see out there now, and this is pin-mounted off of that, so it's the same.
Okay. I think that's what was throwing me. Okay.
So, I have a couple of overall observations. One, the small sign that you see at the street seems to me ought to be somehow much more related to the signs you see later on. Same color, same letters, something. Presently, I find the little one at the street weak.
It's too small.
Way too small, way too low. I mean, we're not all in small cars, some people are in trucks, so, anyway, it's gotta be higher than that. But also, I inherently would have thought that it'd been the same kind of color palette that... And on the second one, when you say Arsenal Park-
I'll get there for you.
Right there, it looks like that's a drive-in for it to park, as opposed to it being, in fact, several hundred, a couple hundred yards away. So, you know, you read that, I would pull in there and say, well, where's the park, you know?
The location of it, yeah.
And why is Watertown a different color? I mean, you know, if it said Arsenal Park kind of stretched out, maybe you'd get the notion that it really is down there.
Farther along towards the touch of-
Or maybe it just needs a big arrow somewhere, you know? Frankly. But there's gotta be some tie-in between the little sign, this little one by the tree.
Yeah, exactly. Just real quiet. To go back to your comment about the monument sign, again, up in the right corner here, this is the existing monument sign that's there. So we were taking, we actually made it a little bit taller than the existing sign, and we were just kind of repurposing the same materials. But I take your point, to unite those two elements with the color of the typeface.
I mean, this is, you know, for this town, this committee, that identification is a major piece, you know? And if you're not gonna do it, then somebody else will. But we've gotta know where this park is, you know? Because it's much more hidden now than it is presently, except, well, not easy to find at the moment, but, and maybe it is more open. But, you know, it ought to really be, it's a major event, and it should, it needs a sign way bigger than that.
So, I should point out that that sign is bigger than the ones existing, and I think that that-
Doesn't work. Doesn't work.
And I probably agree with you, but the criteria was already proved, so I think we've met-
Okay, well, we'll have to do it again, then. It's unsuccessful at the moment.
Also, the material of it and what's on it. We have some, we need to have a conversation about that. We have some specifications. I mean, it might be that we want the town seal on there, so it shows that it's actually not Arsenal Parking Garage, but Arsenal Park, which is a town, you know, site and stuff like that. So, I mean, we have some standards. You should reach out, and we can talk about that, but that's a separate, you know, that's the signage for the park, which is, there was existing signage, and it's being replaced with new signage. So that needs to be finalized.
Are they involved with that sign?
They're installing it.
Responsible for that sign?
But it's our sign.
I agree 100% that I think the two could tie together. It doesn't feel like they're connected.
Did you consider a gateway? Some sort of a gateway announcing the park? You know, like, out west, they have the-
Like an arch?
No, not an arch. Just two poles and a sign.
You have some old ambers you wanna put up there?
That's what we're doing.
Bring you some antlers. No, but I mean, seriously, I mean, that's, it's a gateway to the park. I mean, here, you're, one way or another, you're putting the name of the park on a garage, oblique to the viewer, except for the first one we saw, which I contend is not readable, and doesn't really meet the test of being a sign. It's more of a graphic and interesting kind of octal thing, but not a sign. So something that announces where the park is is important, I think.
So we do have a new gateway sign element between their central green and the park on the east end, and it's a fabricated metal piece that looks like a, you know, historic Arsenal-type piece, and it has Arsenal Park in letters inside of the channel, on top of two brick columns. So there might be some-
Between A and G, or F?
A and F? Yeah. So, it's because it's different parts of your team that are working on it, I guess, right?
So replicating something like that?
So it might be, like, at least referencing that, might be. It's branding Arsenal Park in a different way than we had historically, but it's part of that. You know, we have concrete signage inside the park that was built, when the park was built, and we have this new metal signage that we're currently moving down the path of putting in at the interface between their property and our park, that's pedestrian interface. But there might be some opportunity to look at something else there that might be more in keeping with that. Arsenal history, potentially, like you were saying. Or like a slightly bigger monument that it would be built on, and then use, you know, signage that would be. It needs to convey, the sign that's for the park needs to convey that it's a municipal sign for a municipal park, but also, you know, like, be in keeping with the current pieces. So, that's a separate conversation from their request to make an amendment to the signed master plan, and then also add those four banners that are for tenants. Just, I didn't bring the materials with us, but I would just, you know, bring us back to that and why they're here tonight. And none of us saw this before tonight, so it might be hard for us to chew on this in one meeting. But if you want to, you know, ask questions about the size, or location, or appropriateness of the tenant signage and the park signage there, that the park component and the community branding component was a requirement of, you know, was part of the master plan for signage, and originally, it was those four large banners. So what they're proposing is these banners below, and then four large banners, but the four large banners are for the tenants. And I think they're smaller banners now than what they originally had, but they are, you know, large banners on the side of the garage for tenant spaces. So that's what they're asking, and this is under other, so, one, is this a minor amendment that can just happen through this other business? Or is there need to be more if they're making this change? And then, is this change the direction that's appropriate? We put it under other business as a, you know, they're requesting a minor amendment to their zoning, their special permit for a signed master plan. So just bringing it back to what we talked about last month, because it's been a while, and the next steps for this, and whether it's appropriate, because the primary reason they're doing this is not to talk about the municipal branding or others, they're responding to your request from last month that maybe having something that ties it to the park would be helpful with reviewing the primary reason they're here, right? The four signs are the primary reason that they're here, and then the other pieces, like, well, how's that working together, and whether it's doing something.
Yeah, I think the message we took away last time was that the civic portion was being overpowered. So that's why we increased the number of banners and separated them, and tried to do something unique, and it's a little artsy. I think it's kind of cool, actually, but I think it's creative, but not, you know, it all may understand it and be able to read it. And I appreciate that.
I mean, just hold on just a second. It's a little bit too bad that, and maybe it's just a case, but that we have to get by the first building before we can have any identification here. You know, you wonder if there isn't something else, because it's, you know, you're already a couple hundred feet back before you see any of the second signage beyond the first one. And I guess it begs the question, could there be something on that first building? It's a different function, obviously, it may be a little strange, but maybe not. You know, because you're driving, and, you know, if you've never been there before, ideally, you're not looking way back there, you're hopefully focused on the rest of the street, but, you know, in front of you. So, I think it's gonna be hard to see that that far away.
I don't think you'll see it at all, to be honest with you.
It was secondary messaging, that you, the monument sign, whether it be undersized or not, we can obviously consider that. But it was really just then, once you enter that road, that you can now get the message that you're continuing down towards Arsenal Park.
I still think that the-
There's also the Harvard Vanguard, where is the Harvard Vanguard sign gonna be?
It's right outside, like, past those black bars, it's outside of the view.
I was gonna say, I still think that the commercial signage is still kind of overpowering the civic piece of it. And I know that's why you're here, but I just don't, the civic was a requirement. And again, like Jeff said, I had the same thought. It's so far back that, one of the points that you had made was that it's to give some exposure to marshals and others from the west side, you know, people traveling eastbound on Arsenal Street. I just don't see that they're gonna see that sign. I hope they're not gonna see that sign, quite honestly, driving down the street, because it means they're not looking where they should be looking. And so I do think you need to go back, and obviously, we can't make a decision tonight. This is the first time any of us have seen this, so don't make anything about consideration.
Lisa Felton, our town councilor, just took big. I just wanted to make a note that my understanding is why we're here is because they wanted to add retail commercial signage to the civic way. So I hope we don't lose sight of the fact of, I know Arsenal Park isn't designed yet, but, you know, this isn't the main entrance to Arsenal Park. I know Marshall's taken a hit with the construction, but we're not really wanting to direct, my understanding, the retail commercial traffic here, that, so, to Gideon's point, I think there needs to be more conversation about standards and really making it clear that Arsenal Park is a jewel of the town, is civic, open to the public, and, you know, whether it's public art or whatever, and we're kind of caught in signage and really focusing on what, I know it's your property, I can understand why you want retail commercial signage, but I would hope that the board and town in general would give serious consideration that this would be a big change, to kind of give away this view corridor for all intents purposes of connections to the park. So with that, I appreciate the collaboration, and I feel for them trying to come up with something when I think even the idea of how we're drawing people to Arsenal Park and what that city-controlled sign is gonna look like isn't necessarily fair to them spending time on this, in my opinion as well, so, thank you.
Can I suggest that we make a decision to approve, if we agree, to approve the commercial banners as shown, and to reserve the spandrel area for mutually agreed-upon signage for the town, for the park?
Yeah, I mean, I think the staff memo doesn't agree with that, but if you, that's why it's going to you. So, we believe that this was the civic corridor, and that the amount of signage and how it's designed is not appropriate. So that was our recommendation to you at the last meeting. And so you would have to take that, and that it's your review, and you can determine that this is a minor change to allow up to X amount of banner signage along this corridor. I think there's certainly other ways to go about doing this. You could consider those bays as commercial presences and allow a small sign facing towards the parking lot for just the commercial that's lower. That's not like saying, here's our big tenants, or, I mean, there's so many different scenarios that would allow people to know that this parking garage is for these tenants when they're driving down the street. That isn't these banners, but it's, that's the problem with signage, right? There's a million ways to go about designing something.
This is a classic case of being there some afternoon and looking at this may make all the difference. It's really hard to tell the relationship here.
I mean, the other thing I wanted to bring up at the last meeting is that if there's a, if there's a need for temporary signage during construction to identify that this is an access point for a tenant that's open right now, that is a different conversation, and that's something that we can review and approve to put over this opening into the garage.
That'd be a good way to test out the final scene, too. It'd be a good way to test out what you have there.
Yeah, a temporary banner on the garage to identify that this is an entrance to the garage for Harvard Vanguard and for marshals, or whatever. I mean, it's a different scenario than this. Temporary signage is different than changing the master plan, special permit, master plan, from staff's perspective. So if you provide guidance, I know that they do want some, you know, guidance on this, and you seem to be conflicted.
So one thought I had, just as we were discussing this, and as Lisa was talking, and thinking about the pedestal sign, what about the notion of that pedestal sign, make it taller? Arsenal Park's at the top with an arrow, so that you know that you go right here to go into the park. And then below that, you could have the smaller signs with marshals or whatever tenants you have, and basically, like, next right, or some way of, more of like a wayfinding type arrangement. Because that's, you know, living in that neighborhood and right next door, I see where, you know, how people get lost, and I know what they ask for, and it seems to me, as people are heading west- are heading west or eastbound on Arsenal Street, it'd be clear, this is where I go to go to the park. And because what you had said earlier is you want to drive people into the main entrance to get into the, the retail piece of it. Maybe you look at doing something like that instead of doing these banners on the side. And then Janet had talked about, maybe is there some way we can do something green on the side of the parking garage? Maybe that's something you look at. So, but I don't think, I'm personally not ready to make any decision on this tonight, given the hour.
So if I could sort of follow up on Gideon's earlier point, so what's the definition of temporary construction signage? Because, you know, we've still got another 30 months of construction activity out there that's creating a tremendous amount of disruption for what is really the only remaining retail tenant. And so if there was, if we could maybe sort of get some-
There's a, there's a process.
... concept for, but-
There's a process through staff to do-
There's always a process.
... temporary signage.
But is temporary construction signage during the duration of the entire construction project that sort of changes, I think, some of our interim thinking vis a vis the, you know, the need to get Marshalls some, some relief in a very temporary-
You can have temporary signage that's on the building to identify it as an entrance on the structure during the construction process. And you would just have to identify what the timeframe is of that, and it can be renewed or it can be updated. Perhaps the signage would have to be replaced. You've had temporary signage, it's, I think it might be finally gone in the front. That was all temporary around the, the original box-
Correct. Where the arches were. And that's fine, and I think we can certainly, and if the, Jeff's earlier suggestion, because I was out there yesterday in sort of preparation for this and talking to Tom on the phone, and I think when you are there, I think you get a much different perspective, and I would invite several of you to come out between, you know, this meeting and next month's meeting, because I think that there is an opportunity to, to maybe get a better understanding of sort of the physical realities of HVMA and the hotel is starting to come out of the ground and some of the sightlines that you don't really probably get, you know, standing here at nine o'clock on a, on a Wednesday night, so.
It's a somewhat unusual condition that you're trying to emphasize something that's that far away-
Correct.
-and then in the meantime, something that-
Correct.
It almost seems like your best temporary signage option would be on the hotel. Now, I don't, I mean, just-
Or Marshalls may not, you know, we've, there's a lot of, yes, it probably, you're right, because that, that, that corner of, of the hotel, and, you know, and unfortunately, that's not-
Having it right above the door to the garage, though, would make a lot of sense, because it is identifying that you can enter-
Right.
-through this parking lot and go into the garage. Is, is that section of the garage open? Can you actually drive in that door of the garage yet?
Right now, no.
So actually, it would be bad right now, too, because it would, it's misleading, but-
Yeah, because that, that section of the garage and that, that piece, that is behind fence.
Yeah, even the entrances now, too, right? Because you move the entrance a little bit west to go around the construction, so.
Yes, well, we've put in a temporary, we've put in a temporary entrance to Harvard Vanguard, again, so we could, again, from a safety perspective, and we're about to erect a tower crane and, you know, all of the various things, so yes, we have a nice temporary entrance in for Harvard Vanguard.
And that's temporary for the part two.
What do we think the next step is? I mean, could we, in fact, organize a simple, you know, Saturday morning out there at nine o'clock or not?
If there's any deliberation by the board, then any site visit would require it to be a, a meeting. But you are all welcome to go to the site and look at it individually and not have conversations about it amongst yourselves.
She could come if, if they make it real, wouldn't they?
Yeah, then we would have to advertise it and go through the process and, and all that. I mean, you can do, you can arrange a site visit and it can be weak, but, but you can also go there individually and talk about scenarios. You can talk to staff about it individually, or you can, we can set up a site visit if you'd like to do that, but.
Can I add a, sorry?
So, yeah.
No, go ahead.
But let's wrap this up.
Just, I want to add to what Janet was saying before. Looking at it now, I don't really have so much of an issue with the commercial signs. I just, the way the Arsenal Park signage is done, I think needs, needs some help. Like, I, I could look at it and say, well, these actually don't seem as overpowering as the ones you presented last time. I think they're shorter, are they not? Their proportion is a little more even right now. It's just that neither of those options for the civic signage really do it for me. And it makes me think there's this, is it a semaphore? Is that what that's called? I think, like, if you go down 93 and there's the Greater Boston Food Bank and it's got all those little things sticking out, I think it's supposed to work like that. I've never really been able to see it for what it really is supposed to be. And I think maybe, like you say, it's kind of like an interesting concept or theory, but it just, I don't know, it doesn't seem to work there, and it, I, at that one right angle, you'll get it, but other than that, I find it-
Honestly, I think that, the challenge was how to create a cool civic design, because we didn't think it was really competing with the commercial. The commercial is set back. It's not the best commercial signage, honestly. And you really only see two bays if you're out there. You don't even see the four bays, because of the angle, it, it changes so quickly as you drive down the street. But it made Marshalls very happy to see that we were making this effort to get them signage there, because they've been through so much pain and misery. And we didn't, that's why we didn't think it was so much of a big ask. I think it's an important ask to design the civic portion of it properly, but we didn't think the retail piece being that far back and really, not really, two of them really being that visible was that big of a deal. I think we could spend more time working on the civic and maybe the monument sign gets bigger, or maybe there's more of an arch or some entry point. But the important, obviously, why I'm here, I'm trying to just kind of protect the interests of the retailers and make sure they, they survive and they thrive as we open, you know, through all these multiple phases. That's really what's critical to us at this point in time.
So, seems to me we've done about all we can on this tonight.
It doesn't sound like the- It doesn't sound like the board is ready to make a decision tonight.
I don't think there's a motion in, in order. And so this was a review, and we thank you for bringing it forward. But I guess individually, then, I would suggest we be out there and then what, respond through you or respond directly and not directly?
Yeah, if you have individual comments about guidance that you think could be helpful, I mean, I think that the, the big piece of this is not about what the civic signage looks like. It's that they're asking for X amount of square feet of signage in a corridor that is the main corridor to the park. And so when it was approved, that's what was there. So the key is, that's the question for me. It's about that original signed master plan and whether changing it to be a, a commercial signage corridor is a change and is it appropriate as a minor change, and that's what you're reviewing. The, the design of the civic component or what, what they're adding to that, whether the civic component is up high or down low, that, that's not the question for, for this. So for me, that's-
Well, I take, I take, I totally disagree with that. What we need to come up with was some notion of what it could all look like-
A package.
-and then we can deal with a square footage notion. But I don't care about the square footage at the moment, but I do care about what it looks like, and at the moment, we're not there.
Yeah.
Period. Okay?
So you want, you would like to see a package that works for both-
Well, I mean, sure, absolutely.
So it sounds like the board is interested in continuing to pursue some kind of scenario that allows commercial signage on this corridor, but they're not satisfied with what was shown tonight. Is that-
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Because that was the question. Can we consider commercial signage on the corridor?
I think the two go hand in hand, right?
How does it work?
How does it work? That's, well, they're gonna allow it, it has to work, if you're not allowed.
So I would suggest that individually, if we have to do it individually, we go there, look, see, make some comments to, to the staff, and you could compile them and we'd do this again next month or something.
And if you feel that you need to do a site visit, that's for everybody?
It's not, it's not an easy problem.
I'd like to suggest, too, that it, excuse me, it led me to revisit the concept of this route as a civic space, because it's always been, if you want to go to Arsenal Park, you watch for that sign, you turn right. And that's still the case. What was on the other side of that was kind of irrelevant. And it's not, it's not making that corridor a civic space. It's making it, we're, we're talking about two things. We're talking about wayfinding, which is making sure that you know how to get from Arsenal Street to the park. And that's one thing, and that's addressed largely by what's the sign that tells you to make that turn. You're not going to be looking beyond and saying, oh, look at that banner, says Arsenal Park. You're looking at, at street level where you're driving, and that's, that sign that's going to turn you. And then you're not looking up, you're looking at the park. So I'm rethinking, is this really a civic corridor? Is this, is this more importantly, as it's, it's how you get to the park, but it's also how you get a lot of traffic off of Arsenal Street, because they'll say, oh, that's where I can park for Marshalls and get off of Arsenal Street. So I'm seeing a positive side to the commercial banners that we're not really addressing. I'm seeing that we've got a lot of people driving down Arsenal Street from the west coming to this site, and when they see those banners, they'll say, oh, hey, there's the garage, let's get off of Arsenal Street. And that's, that's a plus in my mind.
So Marshall's problem is now, right? Why couldn't there be almost whatever is totally reasonable in terms of temporary signage for Marshalls now?
Right.
And then just forget any commercial signage on, on the civic sort of domain of that from a long-term point of view, but do whatever you can to get customers back to Marshalls now. I mean, do they have a problem when this is all done, done and occupied? Because they're way in the back?
Yeah, I mean, they've suffered tremendously, and I think their, their request was to do this long-term. I mean, they're just not used to being in this kind of mixed-use development, kind of deep into the site, lacking a major pylon and lacking visibility from the street. So this was kind of their second choice. If you can get us presence on the west side, it would make them happier, and we were trying to satisfy them.
I mean, I think at the same time, we ought to be looking at, I just can't remember what the signage is on the other side. You know, we just can't remember all this now, so, you know, it'd be interesting to see what it really looks like if you go beyond the hotel and turn in.
We have, the only sign we have at the main entrance that, that you, that currently exists is one Arsenal Yards kind of pylon that just says Arsenal Yards on it. So there's no tenant signage. The tenant signage happens at the right in, right out, right in front of the historic building. And it's very small and has probably six panels on it. And then there's one more sign, again, small, down at the Home Depot entrance, and that's it. And that's why Marshalls is used to, you know, big 35 high pylon with big giant panels on it. We convinced them early on that this is a very different project and they want to be part of it. But I think as they've gone through the pain and misery of the last couple of years, they said, can you please get us some presence on the west side, because we realized we don't have anything. So, because especially when you come from the west, at the main entrance, there's no signage for any of our anchor stores. You have to actually go past the main entrance to get to the right in, right out before you hit any tenant signage.
Can you come, just when you come back, can you look at what Marshalls had had approved in the past and what they actually, so they had a single sign approved that maxed out their entire building, and it was about 100 square feet. So it'd be helpful to understand that. And it didn't have good visibility either. So, I mean, this has been a conversation that Marshalls has had with the town since the 1980s.
So they didn't see their sign from the street.
Only, only when you got to the entrance and turned, that was always-
That's a different development.
But it, I mean, it's, it's a similar, I just wanted to give you some context on, I totally understand Marshall's current situation, but they have always wanted more signage and they've always, they've had a maxed-out signage, and it was low on the building, 20 feet, it couldn't go any higher. And it was 100 square feet, maxed out the building, and maybe it was 120, I can't remember how big it was, but it was, it was low and there was vegetation in front of it and you couldn't see it when you were driving down the street.
Like on the facade of what is now Building A.
Yeah, it was, it was on, there was two. There was one that was Filene's Basement, and I think they had the, the prime spot, which was a little higher, and then Marshalls, or was it the other way around? I don't remember. And then that was Sports Authority, and, you know, there was this series of, those were the two main signs for that facade that really, you know, back in the day, we only allowed 200 square feet of signage for each building. So that's, that's the context. And they were there since the 80s with that one single sign, and you could not see it through the parking lot.
Well, yeah, and I get the fact that maybe the, the thinking is that-
But now there's all this other development.
Yeah, I mean, people maybe don't think that Marshalls is still there after this is all done, even, even if it's there now in an institution in Watertown. I understand that that's their concern, like, oh, water, Marshalls is still there, I didn't know, they're kind of buried at the back of the site.
And they were on a four-sided pylon at the main entrance.
Hmm.
Thirty years, and we took that away.
They're that little-
That erector set kind of pylon sign. They were on that.
The tempor, the temporary one.
No, it was permanent, that's been there for 25 years.
Well, they, you, you put a face on it.
You put temporary stuff on it now, right? And that's all, that's going away, and only because of the single Arsenal Yards sign.
Right. So it sounds like there's clear, there's some direction to-
Take the next up. Yeah. I just, I have to voice my, my disappointment, honestly, because I don't think this is a very big ask. You know, and I think you're talking about two different issues. There's a, there's a civic design, we're happy to spend time on that, and whether it's on the garage or expanding the monument sign, again, the critical issue for us is the, the tenant signage and getting them some relief and some exposure on this side. And, you know, we spent a lot of time, energy and money designing this site to integrate into the town. I think we've done a phenomenal job integrating, and I don't, I don't have the view, but the view corridor, you can see it now, down that, our second right in, right out, the view of the park, and the view of the Charles is tremendous. We've created 110-foot wide space that's now our river green that provides access and visibility into the park. So, you know, we've thought about how, ways to connect to the community into the park. So we appreciate the sensitivity to a civic corridor, but we exist and we're, we're, we're a big new neighborhood, and we want to embrace and we want to make those connections, and that's why we thought this was not-
So what were you actually looking for tonight?
We, we're looking for approval of the, the tenant banner signs on the west side of the garage.
Yeah, well, you can't see much of them from this slide, but-
Can you do the, the next view?
But I also, you know, you do have to understand that-
Yeah, just the four at the top is really all we're asking for.
The four of them?
Asking for approval when this is the first time we've seen this. All these other cases we got on Friday last week, so we've had time to consider them. And to come in here and think that you're going to get approval based on a presentation right now is not fair to us. So I think you need to rethink that expectation.
So are you proposing, are there just two signs here, the red and the blue?
And there's a white one beyond.
There's a white, is a white one further down?
It's four, yeah, four total it looks like. Can you zoom that out a little?
Can't see it, yeah.
While you're doing that, I have a question. I mean, is it, would Marshalls only get one of the four? Is there a scenario where Marshalls gets?
They would only get one.
Okay, and the other three are three other tenants?
Yeah, anchor tenants, most likely, yeah.
Which are?
I think we put them actually off. Roach Brothers will take it. In terms of size of square footage, that's how we prioritize that.
So I would only say, you know, this is a group of architects and, and one engineer, of course. But anyway, Russ, to understand what that blue or purple or red sign really looks like, how it attaches to the building, how high it is, I mean, you're not showing us any of that. You know, this is just a-
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, but, so, Patson's point is well-taken. We need to kind of digest this a little bit, I think.
But we're not really digesting this anyway, right? I mean, this is not the final product. Like, what are we going and back and doing between now and next month?
But the fact of the matter is, you know, once you attach something like this to the concrete side of the building, you're not going to want to change it a whole lot. You got holes you've just made, you're not going to, you know? So it is going to be final, right?
No, no, I meant the design.
So what? Yeah, I guess my, yeah, I, you're right, I think the tenant would- Yeah, I guess my, yeah, you're right. I think the tenant would, panels would be final.
Yeah, they'd have to be, yeah.
What I'm hearing is we need to revisit the civic portion. And what I'm afraid of is we're going to try to design that by committee, which is always really difficult.
No, but we have a right to look at everything else we've seen here. So, don't cut us short on this. And he's absolutely right. We need to have seen this overnight at least. I mean, come on. This is a big deal. And I can't tell if, I think they're too narrow, frankly. But anyway, I think we need to look at it. So, that's where we are.
Does this exist as a handout that we can have? So, when we go over there, we can look at it?
Sure, absolutely. We can make that available.
Because, I mean, it is a virtual application kind of for an instantaneous reaction.
It is much easier to be out there and look at a plan and then look up at the garage and have a sense of
And you have these in your office in the, in the building? You still have an office in the building, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah. We can make this available, sure.
You'll submit them to the, they'll submit them to our office and we'll get
Yeah, but, you know, it wouldn't hurt us to drop in their office either. There's nothing wrong with that, you know? Come on. I mean, we can't have this distance all the time. No.
No, I'm sorry to push. I appreciate
Oh, good for you, absolutely.
You want to view it and, I'm just, I'm trying to fight for the tenants, kind of the challenges that we faced in the retail world.
I didn't hear anything tonight that said, no, we're dead set against retail signage. That would be a different message, I think, we'd be giving you. But I think we just need a little bit more time to think what's appropriate.
But you're saying that Marshalls would be satisfied with this?
They would be, yes.
Okay.
Do they have the same signage on the other side of the building, other side of the garage? I can't remember that.
No, they'll just have a sign above their entrance. That's it.
You know, I have to say one thing, that if you had a kick-ass solution to the Arsenal Park signage, it would make a big difference to me, anyway, speaking just for myself. It's just, it's an interesting and creative and sort of arty thing, as you said earlier. But I think it's not enough. I think there also needs to be actually wayfinding, effective wayfinding. For, there's a lot of new people in town. Not everybody's been here 50 years and knows where it is. Plus, it's something that'd be nice for the town to be able to celebrate along with the Arsenal Yards and its opening and grandeur and all of that.
My follow-up to that would be that a kick-ass design takes a little bit more time and input. And that if we didn't have objections to the commercial signage and we felt like we wanted to invest more time into the real kick-ass civic design, I would separate those two items and have faith that we can come to some conclusion and some better solution.
Yeah, I feel the same.
But they are related. I think if you go with a scheme, and they're really related, yeah.
Well, no, I think we're, I think we're all agreed that we don't want to go with the schemes that were shown for the Arsenal Park. I think what I'm trying to do is separate the two issues and say that we don't seem to be terribly opposed to the commercial signage. We just don't feel that we have a resolution on the other part. And I'm okay with them not being related. I think, I think, given the distance you see the commercial banners at and the proximity that you're going to experience the civic barter, I don't feel like, you know, we have to have one before we can have the other. But I think we're all in a different place on this.
But the interesting thing's going to happen here, let's say the green doesn't exist at the moment. And you have just those vertical signs. They're going to look like they are way up there. And you wonder why they're so far, you know, they are, they're what, 20, 10, 20, 25 feet off the ground. So, at the bottom of them, and that's unusual. So, frankly, if we didn't have this green sign or whatever it is running along, I think all those others normally would be lower. I mean, they would. Much easier to see. Otherwise, you're looking, you're really driving, you're looking up like this, which seems odd to me as opposed to. So, I think there's a coordination issue here that is important.
I think there's a nice difference. I like the commercial signs. I didn't think I would. I didn't like the idea of yielding the civic entree to the park to commercial interesting graphics. But I don't think it hurts. If you thought about the area from the bottom of the banner signs, the commercial banner signs as being kind of the zone that you can celebrate the entrance to the park, however that evolves. And the civic banners just sit quietly up there, doing their job. I don't have an issue with that either. I think I just want to see the solution, you know?
Yeah, that's the challenge. I mean, because we thought about, let's create a zone. But we know there'd be questions about what happens within that zone.
Yeah. I mean, I think I, I think I agree with you. I'm comfortable with what's above. I'd just like to see something really nice happen with the park identity. Doesn't have to be big or expensive, just something kind of interesting and creative.
So, I think we can agree we're closer than we were a month ago. Yeah? Sorry, that doesn't give you much to deal with. But there's no reason this takes a whole lot longer either. So, I think we curtail the discussion at the moment unless there's some motion. Okay. So, we'll see you again shortly, I hope.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Stand adjourned.